Okay, folks. All right. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee meeting of October 8th, 2025. A reminder we're being recorded and streamed on WHCA. If everyone would please join me for our pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, united, sovereign, free, just, and fair. Thank you. So we're going to start with public comment. Everybody, reminder that public comment in three minutes. And please hold your comments to that because we do have a large agenda tonight. So the first is Jeanne Robach. Jeanne, come on up, please. Just identify yourself and your address, Jeanne, okay?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Robach, 879 Bedford Street, Whitman. I am the proud mom of three children in this district. One of my children, who is now a senior at Whitman Hansen High School, receives special education services. He accesses a number of supports, and I want to start by saying how grateful I am for the staff here who have helped him thrive. His experience has been overwhelmingly positive, and I have seen firsthand the life-changing impact that dedicated educators and strong special education services can provide. That said, it was not always this way. In the beginning, we faced struggles to ensure he had access to what he needed in order to make effective progress. It took persistence, collaboration, and time to get to where we are today. And because I know the difference these supports make, I am deeply concerned by some of what I heard discussed at the last school committee meeting. As a mom with three children, my days are full and busy, and I don't always have the opportunity to attend meetings live, but I make it a priority re-watch them and stay informed. Being connected to what is happening in this district is extremely important to me, not only as a parent, but as someone who wants to ensure that all children, regardless of need, have equitable access to the education and services that will allow them to succeed. I was upset to learn the district had to rely on the circuit breaker to pay last year's bills, and even more alarmed by indication that cuts to special education are being considered. I would like to know, why are these cuts being proposed? What data and priorities led you to this point? I share this tonight because I want you to hear directly from a parent who has been both sides, the challenges of fighting for appropriate services and the rewards when those services are provided effectively. Special education is not just a line item on a budget. It is a lifeline for families like mine and an investment in our children's futures. Before you remove a paraeducator or intervention position from programs, I implore you to observe the work they actually do. I taught a life skills class in the public schools for many years. When the program was funded and staffed appropriately, students could access general education opportunities and make meaningful legally required progress. When staffing was reduced to the bare minimum, the numbers looked compliant on paper by what the regulations are. The reality in the classroom was very different. Staffing decisions that appear to be based only on headcounts miss critical details such as student profiles, medical needs, behavioral supports, and the time required to safely and effectively include students in a school day. You might see a substantially separate classroom listed with four paraeducators, even though regulations indicate two are required. There are a reason for that. Those additional adults are not there to create jobs; they are there because the students' needs demand it. Cutting to the regulatory minimum without regard for the students' profiles short changes the program and the children's it serves. I also want to caution about unintended consequences-
The three minutes are up. So if you could just finish, just finish your last sentence for us. I hate to cut you off, but-
When students' needs are not met within district programs, families and teams are going to be forced to seek outside placements, which are far more greater expensive than a paraeducator's salary. I implore you to look deeper into cuts that are not going to affect students, but maybe in your administration costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dawn?
Dawn Byers, 20 Russell Road, Whitman. I emailed the committee on October 1st. I'm speaking tonight about two concerns on your agenda item for the regional agreement. Under mass law, regional school committees are built on the principle of proportional representation based on population of the towns. Imposing the two-thirds supermajority vote on items other than the annual budget is in conflict with the proportional representation. It allows a smaller town to override the majority. I don't support the addition of the section 2A, number three. A true partnership does not come from surrendering majority representation or from altering cost formulas to favor one side. Real compromise means both towns share responsibility fairly within the framework and intent of the law. What's being proposed is not an equal partnership; it is an imposed imbalance related to the two separate methods calculating the bus transportation. It's inequitable and not consistent with the current regional agreement in place. So I ask, as you review this tonight, I hope that you all have transparency in all three agreements in front of you. Start with the amended one that you presented for this year, August 2025, the 2018 one that went to Whitman and Hanson Town Meeting, and also the 1992 one, which is on the regional school districts website. The binding agreement today is the 1992 agreement, and that has transportation costs in it that say mandated or non-mandated should be treated as an operating cost. What does that mean? District-wide population, 61% Whitman students, 39% Hanson, that's how the cost should be spread. But the district's not doing it that way. I sat on this committee. We talked about transportation last year, and I'll be honest with you. There was a lot of distractions. There was a lot of obfuscation. I struggled to come up with the right questions. It wasn't until the last meeting became very clear to me. When it was said at the last meeting, the transportation language in this proposed amendment is how we're doing it today. It's how we're assessing it today. We're not changing anything because it's how we're doing it. And I thought, how we're doing it? Well, how we're doing it is determined by the regional agreement. That's when I went back to 1992. So I don't know. I don't know. The district has been calculating and assessing one town, Whitman, overburdening it. So I ask you to move forward tonight, ask what are the financial implications of this new amended agreement? Who stands to benefit from this? Who stands to lose? When you overburden one town, which Whitman is paying more for this than Hanson, she should be, you overburden and you cause cuts. Just what we heard from Ms. Robach. That's what happens. You shrink the size of the school, you narrow down the programs and services. I spoke with Desi yesterday, had a conference call. Jay Sullivan, Christine Lynch, Michelle Griffin, they asked me, if you're using the mileage method and you're reimbursing the state based on the mileage method-
Dawn, it's three minutes.
Why are you not assessing both mandated and non-mandated by mileage? It should be uniform, and it should be done the same, not two different ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Justin Evans, 57 Candlewick Lane, Whitman Select Board, and representative on the regional agreement committee. Dawn actually did a lot of my work for me. At our, not our last select board meeting, but the meeting prior to that, we discussed the regional agreement. And the issue of the equitable funding of the busing formula came up. It does seem like, through this process, I've been taking the feedback from the rack back to the select board, and as all the bodies have, as your board has, and coming back and forth. What I had not appreciated was that some members of my board saw that the busing change and the two-thirds is sort of a linked agreement. And I am worried now that the, we didn't take a vote on it, but I'm worried now that the Whitman Select Board would not support the agreement as is presented in front of you today if it does not change the busing formula now with the plans of addressing it later, but then raises the threshold to amend the agreement down the road. So that appears to be, that's what I will bring back to the regional agreement committee in a couple of weeks, but you're discussing it tonight, so I thought it pertinent for you to have that information now. I think something for you to consider is, you know, having, I think, the only voting member on the regional agreement through this whole process. When we started, Chris Scriv and Chris Howard, myself and Jim Mickey agreed to work within the parameters of what was going to be agreeable by both towns. And, you know, after hearing where Hanson is on changing any assessment formula that may come back to increase the cost to Hanson, and where Whitman may be on changing the threshold to amend the agreement while pushing things off that we want down the line in the agreement, it may be time to discuss whether we take the busing language back to the 92 agreement, not make that change in the 2017 proposal that we carried over, and pull the two-thirds and make it really more of an administrative change, fix a lot of the things that we've identified as broken, capital emergency costs, the fourth quarter payment, some of the less flashy things that are agreeable by everybody, just because we don't want to blow this up at town meeting and come back to a 30-year-old agreement again in a couple of years to amend. So something for you to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. Next, we have a student presentation from the Conley Elementary School.
This is the fun part of the meeting. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Karen Downey. I'm the principal at the Conley School in Whitman. If you've ever been to our school at the end of the school year, you would see that our ordinary elementary school hallways get turned into a beautiful art gallery. It's one of my favorite things to walk in after the evening installation happens with all the staff members, to walk in that next morning and see the hallways just lined with artwork from every single student in the building. But it all starts with, in September, and all of the skills that the kids learn in art. So I asked Mrs. Horton, probably the best art teacher in the world, to come and talk to you a little bit about what the kids are doing and what they're learning, and then you'll hear from the kids themselves and maybe see some of their artwork, too. So, Mrs. Horton.
Hi, everybody. I'm not shy, but I get nervous talking publicly, so I'm sorry. But I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Mrs. Horton. I'm the elementary art teacher at Conley School. And I was going to tell you about how, you know, all of our lessons follow the state standards and blah, 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 and I was like, oh, that's so boring. So I really just wanted to tell you that my origin story in elementary school was I myself suffered from a learning disorder, and it was really hard for me in school. And I felt like the only place that I fit in was in art class. And so I thought, when it came time to teach, I wanted to make sure that I created a space that was safe for all students. And that's really what I try to do for these kids. We put on music, we dance around, we try to have fun, and I feel like our lessons reflect that. And so with that being said, we're going to start with grade five, and they're going to show you a little bit on what they've been doing this year. And we're starting with Lucy. So Lucy, will you introduce yourself and explain a little bit about these clay turtles that we've been working on in class?
My name is Lucy Gilson, and in art class, we have been learning how to sculpt clay. And right now, she's teaching us all how to make clay. So she showed us this, and it has all different patterns that you can use, and you can hammer it down, and you can have different textures, like the turtle shell. And this is like to make indents and make like texture lines. And she showed us how to make realistic cartoonish and like silly versions. And Ms. Horton is really awesome at showing us how to make all of this realistic clay.
Thank you, Lucy. Next, we have Charlie. Charlie, come on up.
I'm Shirley Shan, and to make my turtle, I started with a thick clay oval for the body. I used clay tools to attach the head, fin, and tails. And I learned why attaching clay is the right, sorry, attaching clay the right way is important so it doesn't fall apart when it dries. Ms. Horton says she does not want to do turtle surgery when the clay dries. I practiced using fine motor skills to press in lines and patterns to create textures on my turtle shell. Here are the tools we use. You can see that the different texture lines on each side, we press it into the clay to give it a different, different look of texture. What I love about art is Ms. Horton allows us to express our creativity and complete our art projects semi-independently to give us instructions, but letting us shape it in our own vision. Thank you.
All right. Next is Nick. Mickey?
Hi, my name is Mickey Doyle. My favorite project we've done in art is the dragon eye. I had a choice to make my turtle look realistic, abstract, or more like a cartoon, which let me be creative. Some people made a big, round cartoon eyes or designed the shelf in the abstract way, while other kids tried to make it look like a real sea turtle. I enjoyed learning how to work with clay and seeing the final outcome. What I love about art is you can be creative and do whatever you're feeling.
And lastly, Jack.
My name is Jack Carter. After the clay dried, we painted our turtles, and we could use realistic colors or make them more abstract. I liked that Mrs. Horton gives us the freedom to decide how to make and paint our turtles. I enjoyed being creative and seeing how my turtle changed through each step. My favorite project we have done in art is the dragon eye because we could pick different eyes to create using colored pencils and paint. I used bright colors to make my dragon eye look realistic. Thank you.
That's so good. And next, we have grade four. We were working on a tractor drawing. It was a landscape. And first, we have Owen. Come on up, Owen.
Hi, my name is Owen Wolf, and I love art. I learned about foreground, middle ground, and background to show space in my picture. Pumpkins that are in the foreground should be large. As you go back in space, the pumpkin should be drawn smaller to appear further away. I also practiced drawing curved lines on pumpkins so they looked round and three-dimensional. What I love about art is you can express how you really feel through it. When I'm drawing, I feel happy and calm. Art makes the world beautiful.
Gina, come on up.
Hi, my name is Christina Garofoli. I used shading with more than one color to make my pumpkins look more realistic. We used red, orange, and yellow to shade our pumpkins. I experimented with different art materials, like oil pastels and watercolor paints, to add color and texture. I enjoyed making a fall scene with a tractor and wagon, deciding how to place the pumpkins. What I love about art is that there are many reasons, well, there are many reasons why I love art. It helps me be creative and use my imagination. I can express myself, and there are no wrong answers with art. Art also makes me happy whenever I am painting, coloring, or doing crafts. I feel calm and focused. When people see my art and smile, it makes me feel proud. Thank you.
I didn't think I was going to crack. Okay, Remy, come on up.
Hi, my name is Remy Brown. I like sharing my own creative choices in my artwork while using the skills we practice in class. For instance, we could choose mountains or hills for our picture, and we could design and color our tractor how we wanted to. I learned about oil resistance. This is when you paint over oil pastels with watercolor paint. Oil and water do not mix, so the oil pastel pushes the watercolor paint away and fills the spaces in between. What I love about art is painting. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Can we see a turtle?
Yeah, just come around with the turtle.
We haven't seen any turtles. Wow, that is beautiful.
Wow, that's very realistic.
Okay.
Next group is our new student advisory group, well, kind of new, some of new, some old. Want to come up, folks, and introduce yourselves and tell us what's going on?
Hi.
Hi.
We are the 2025-2026 Student Advisory Committee. We are excited to start this year with you guys after having such an eventful year during the 2024-2025 school year. To recap, we did things such as an interactive presentations to the middle school, as well as hosting a campus-wide school cleanup. Today, we are here to introduce ourselves, as well as receive some input from you, the school committee, on what you hope to see from us this year. Hi, I'm Kayla Dawson. I'm a senior at Whitman Hansen. You may know me from sitting at the school committee table last year. Outside of student advisory, I am president of National Honor Society, co-president of Spanish Honor Society, co-president of Best Buddies, and an active member in our school's key club and unified track team. Outside of school, as much as I can, I love to hang out with my friends and do competitive dance at Michelle's up the street in East Bridgewater. Next is Amanda.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda McKee. Thank you for giving us the space to speak and receive some feedback from you guys. You guys may recognize me from last year, but to reintroduce myself, I'm Amanda McKee, and I am a senior this year. This is my second year on student advisory. Outside of student advisory, I am president of debate club, vice president of the senior class, president of history honor society, as well as social media coordinator for Best Buddies here at Whitman Hansen. I play basketball and have been on varsity for the past three years, and I am on the unified track team. I am so excited for another productive and impactful year on student advisory.
Hi, school committee. My name is Riley Marshall, and I am a senior at Whitman Hansen this year. This will be my second year on student advisory, and I'm super excited to have this opportunity again and to have another awesome and impactful year. Outside of student advisory, I am a soccer captain. I'm also a co-officer of Spanish Honor Society with Kayla, and a co-officer of Math Honor Society with Gianna, as well as an active member in Key Club, Active Minds, Best Buddies, and Red Cross Club.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Adam Harden, and I am a junior here at Whitman Hansen Regional High School. This is my first year serving on the student advisory board, and I am so excited to begin working with all of you over the course of this school year. Aside from student advisory, I am heavily involved in the school's music program. I serve as vice president of Triad Music Honor Society and assistant drum major for this marching band, and I participate in many of the school's music ensembles. I am also on the boys' soccer team. Outside of school, I'm a boy scout in Whitman Troop 59, and I'm a training martial artist. I am so grateful for this opportunity and look forward to an amazing year. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Gianna Gero, and I'm a senior this year. This is my third year serving as a student advisory member and third year serving as a member of the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives. Around the school, you may seem involved in many things, as I am president of Key Club, co-president of Best Buddies, and an officer in DECA and Math Honor Society. I am also a captain of our varsity volleyball team and participate in unified track and field. Outside of dance, I dance competitively at Michelle's Studio of Dance with Kayla, where I've been for 16 years. I'm extremely excited for another successful year with this group. Continuing, tonight I'll be introducing our new school pantry. Last year, I saw other schools start a food closet in their school to help certain students who aren't as fortunate. I thought it'd be cool to have here, but after doing some research, I noticed it would be extremely beneficial and necessary to have here. Noticing our town's food pantry is only often open during school hours, I realized that excludes a lot of students here who may need help. Attempting to solve this, I went to our administration to propose the idea. We were able to start it up, and thanks to Mr. Farrow, it came along quite quickly. Down below on the campus, near the junior lot, we now have a small wooden pantry to hold food that is accessible to any student that deals with food insecurity here. We will be advertising to both towns, businesses, and the school about the opportunity to donate, as well as the opportunity for a student to take anything if needed. Now, in this my last year here, we also figured that we need a group to lead this in future years, which is where I'll be student advisory's responsibility down the road. This year, myself and student advisory will help grow this to reach the kids needed. I am excited to see where it goes and the impact it has as it hopefully grows along the road. Thank you very much. And then, does anyone have any questions about that or input for this upcoming year?
I was just going to ask you, Jenna, that's awesome. Great idea last year. Can I advertise that to the other schools?
Yes.
It's not specific to the high school?
No.
It's for the entire community?
Yes, both districts.
And are you the spokesperson now for the, were you elected chair for the group?
We haven't fully decided yet.
Oh, you haven't done that yet?
No. I think, we were actually, yeah, we do have a question. Does it have to be one specific person, or can we like take turns serving as a chairperson?
You can do that if you want.
We just need a spokesperson at the table.
At the table.
Okay.
Whoever you choose to be at the table.
Okay, perfect.
Nameplate says student rep.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you want to take turns, if that's easier, you know, for you. And if the food pantry is, it's quite cute. It's wooden-made with shelves, and so probably need some plastic containers, I think, to put some things in to get going and everything, but it looks really nice. It's really a cute idea. Started last year, they got it done this year, so it's a great opportunity for everybody. Yes, Stephanie?
If somebody wants to donate to the food pantry here, is there, do they just put the items in the box down there, or is there going to be a box up here if students are coming in, being dropped off on the bus or whatever, want to drop items? Is there a place for them to leave things?
Yeah, I think we were either going to have, you can do direct drop-offs to there, or even leaving some type of bucket up here that we can be in charge of bringing back and restocking it, if that works.
That's meeting two's agenda.
Okay. Well, I'm ahead of myself, sorry.
I don't see an issue with the drop-off and then putting a box here, but we just have to make sure it's, it's, the stuff, if it's dropped off, it's moved.
Okay, yeah.
We don't need a big pile, and you're going to get a big pile. So I think you regulate that. That's meeting two's agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for asking us, you know, what we want from you, but it really is what you want from us. It really is your voice on this committee and as the student body being recognized in a process that affects you. So if there's anything you want, you want to include as an equal, essentially by law, please let us know. Okay, yeah. I honestly think just the advertising right now, just to get it out, given that it is new, but I think that would be very much-
Well, you just went live on cable so three people know. And tomorrow, 24 will know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, everyone. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes, September 10th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Commissions, deletions. Okay, all in favor? Okay?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. One abstention. Okay. Next up, Mr. Hyde, y'all, on. This is Brian Hyde. Well, he'll introduce himself when he comes up.
Good evening, Chair Stafford, members of the committee, Superintendent Simonak. My name is Brian Hyde. I work for TMS, the Management Solutions. Before I even start, with my preamble, these kids are great. I feel bad for the seniors because everything senior is so much fun until you get accepted to college or get a job or military. It's a stressful time as a senior, but you're going to get through it, and you're doing great. So the Whitman Hansen Regional School District's business office is committed to supporting continuous improvement, transparent communication, and fiscal responsibility, leading to student achievement and student success. We are a unified team, and I hope that, we are a unified team with the purpose of being a high-performing school district, and I hope that this meeting is one more step in that process. Like I said, I work for TMS. I've been there since 2022 when I retired. I was a teacher, high school administrator, superintendent of schools, and finance director for a few districts, two districts, actually. But since then, I've worked in over a dozen districts for TMS. We're in about 45 districts that are struggling to, in their business and finance operations. Finding a qualified and quality business manager is almost as hard as finding a bus driver, right? It's difficult. So our company's doing pretty well. We're in a lot of different places, but you are not alone in the issues you have in your business office. I want you to say that right up front. That's why we're in business, because people are struggling to fill that hole. And when you get into that office, it's a lot in operations, because like we saw today- And when you get into that office, it's a lot in operations, because like we saw today, kids and teaching and learning, it seems to take a backseat to budget, budget, budget. And the reason of my preamble was to let you know that we're here for one purpose, and that's for the children, and that's gonna support the values of the taxpayers of Whitman and Hansen, and I believe in that strongly. I have eight children. That's why I'm still working. Three out of college, two in college, one special needs student who is a residential special ed student, and two in high school and middle school. So we're pretty busy. But I'm very excited for this opportunity to work with this leadership team, and I'm very excited that you gave us this opportunity to help Whitman Hansen through the situation that they're in right now without a business manager. So in your packet, we'll start with FY '26, you have a budget-to-actual expenditure and revenue report. I started with '26, so I'm gonna go back to '25 and I'll look forward to '27, but '26 right now, we are in the midst of... When I say "we," the entire leadership team is in the midst of extrapolating all payroll and then reviewing and updating all expense encumbrances. Because you look at your budget, you know, there's $9 million in encumbrances, right? There's $17 million in payroll. What does that really mean? So we're trying to figure out exactly what has been encumbered, what needs to be encumbered, how do we make POs for too less, or too much, or too less, and do we have enough to make payroll throughout the course of the year? So by doing that exercise, which we're in the process of doing now, we will address any known deficits and report action taken to you at your next meeting. But we are aware that there was a general fund expenditure over last... Deficit last year. We can only assume at this point that it's gonna impact FY '26. I bet that it does, but until we know for sure what the exact numbers are, we're gonna keep moving forward. And so the superintendent has, you know, he's putting a spending freeze until we know what's going on, and again, we're looking at where we are in '26 based on payroll and encumbrances. And we have a much better... And if there is a deficit, which we believe there may be, we will take appropriate action and report to you all steps committed by next November. We're chasing revenue, and revenue is running the money. We're about 25% of our revenue is coming in quarter one, you know, four quarters in a year, so our revenue this year, this quarter, was $15.9 million, and everyone's helping in that. The Maryland treasurer is doing yeoman's work, and I had a nice conversation with a woman up in the special ed department, Lisa Forbes, who is chasing Medicaid money and circuit breaker money. So everyone's doing their share, and I appreciate that, because often, we take our eyes off of revenue and worry about expenses, and of course, you can't spend without having any income. In FY '27, now, the principals and directors, they're in the now. They run the district. The superintendent is really in the next. You know, he's looking at, and we all are, really, but most people are just looking at day-to-day to get through the week, but we have to stop planning for '27. And '27 is usually 22 months out. We're budgeting for June of 2027, which sounds like a faraway land, but it's really right around the corner. So the leadership team will meet, which is assistant superintendents and superintendent, and myself, will meet with principals and directors, and will review staffing and budget expectations for the next fiscal year. There will be many difficult staffing conversations are going to take place. That's just across the Commonwealth. Again, it's not new to Whitman Hansen. Esther came, Esther left, people were used to having money, and then it's back to reality. I think I read this week that the state is $500 million in the hole, the Commonwealth. Rhode Island is belly up. So we're in the planning right now to start looking at our services, looking at and righting the ship while maintaining equity in our classrooms. We'll continue to examine all staff's individual class sizes. We'll look at every single caseload for all of our special educators and our paraprofessionals. We'll look at workplace responsibilities, and the superintendent will present to you a budget for FY '27 that's efficient, accountable, and supported. It's extremely meaningful, yet time-consuming work, so stay tuned. The business office itself is in transition, and it's been in transition for a month or so now, and I like... You heard the adage, "Change is loss, loss brings pain, and no one enjoys pain." So anything new is difficult. The good news is that in my professional opinion, and I'm 35 years, I haven't missed a school committee meeting, 36 years of school committee meetings. I've not missed one in a month, so I love this stuff, but you meet a lot of great people. But the district is in capable hands. They really are. Everyone I've met since I've been in this building is extremely committed, extremely caring, and extremely competent. Every single one of them I've met, and I'm not the person that just blows smoke, trust me. Special thanks to Michelle in HR and Jennifer in the superintendent's office. Joey in AP has been great. Charlie in payroll, everyone's doing their job, and relatively, you haven't had the experience or the leadership prior to coming to this district to make things work, and I really think the superintendent's done a nice job with that. Jason in IT has been my guy. He's unbelievable, but and Marilyn and John, the list goes on. They've all been amazingly helpful and welcoming, so I think we're in a good space. I know there's some hurdles that we have to face, but we're gonna get over them, and we're gonna do this together. And I say that to the superintendent every day. It's not just the superintendent and the central office. It's the committee, it's the teachers' union, it's the taxpayers, the finance committees, the boards of selectmen. As soon as everyone comes together, it's gonna be a lot easier in this district, in my opinion. But it is refreshingly refreshing to be assigned to a district where the leadership, the superintendents are deeply entrenched in the business operations. I go in a lot of districts. I've been in 12 districts in the past three years, and you don't see that where they know their numbers. You know, I have conversations with the superintendent, Simon Zach, and assistant superintendent Farrow, and Seema Shewis, and they're taking the bull by its horns. I ask these questions, and usually, you have to let me find out, they just rattle on the moth. So I think we have a good team, we're going in the right direction, we just need to get our act together and bring the two towns together, which might be a miracle, but who knows?
Optimistic, Brian. Optimistic.
Well, we see it a lot.
Good people.
I was in, you know, Dayton, Rehoboth, and Dennis Yama. I see the same stuff, really do, but we have a committed group here. In FY '25, which is what you heard last month, the deficit discussed at previous meetings has been addressed. We're gonna close the year out with zero. I know that was very stressful for a lot of people. I said, "I'm new here, right? I'm way out here, and I'm feeling hot palpitations, right?" And superintendent said, "They haven't had a good night's sleep in a month." But we're gonna get through this. What we did was we removed all of '25 encumbrances. If we didn't get it, we're not buying it. We corrected withholdings. There are some errors in withholdings from staff that should have went, that were charged to the general fund. We re-classed some expenses into circuit breaker, which is as appropriate, building use as appropriate, and went to summer school as appropriate, which should have been charged to those three lines beginning... At the beginning. We had some refunds through expenditure lines, some overpayment, some tuitions that came in, and we utilized any revenue overages that we got that we were not expecting. And because of that, we're gonna close the '25 with a zero, which is great.
Very good.
'26, we're gonna investigate, and '27's gonna be a tough one, but we're gonna get through it, and this district will, because I have extreme confidence in the people in this room. End of the year report, the superintendent received an extension from Jay Sullivan, from Desi, the director of finance, and I'm gonna jump on that report, hopefully within this next week, as soon as we can put a bow on '25. Two more quick things, and I'm sorry to take up so much of your time. OPEB report came in, there's a link in your packet. It's a 70-page report. OPEB, if you're not sure, it's other post-employment benefits, okay? Our post-employment benefits were summarized with an actual... Actuarial valuation of $116.9 million. So if every employee in the district just left today, we're gonna have to fork out $117 million. Now, no one has $117 million in their pocket, and no district fully benefits their OPEB, but what they're looking for is a dedicated revenue stream. We were talking the other day about up in Foxborough. I think that if Foxborough schools up there get a buck for every ticket sold at Gillette. Okay, so Taylor Swift comes in for four nights, and you get $250 grand. You know, nice, nice, right? You know, the Patriots come down, there's another $70 grand. They get a dollar a seat, and that goes towards their OPEB, I believe, you know, towards wherever they decided. They have a dedicated revenue stream. We're not quite there yet, but I did want to bring you to your attention, and all the information that we received, you have, and the links in your packet. And finally, the FY '23 audit, the report is also in your packet, it has a link. It's been completed, it's built in the office. FY '24 audit is being completed now, and we're gonna start working at '26 so we can move into '27. So again, thank you for your efforts. Being on the school committee is a tough gig. I know the work you put into it, the nights you put into it, the subcommittee hours you put into it, and I know firsthand how much work that is, so thank you for the service to the children of Whitman and Hansen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Yes, Martha.
Yes, thank you. If you have... I mean, you mentioned Foxborough's a dollar, and, you know, a ticket, a percentage of the ticket, and the town of Whitman actually does, you know, every drink that's purchased a percentage of that, but when you're in a regional school trying to come up with something, and right now, we're looking at our regional agreement, and this might be something we could embed in it, but maybe, do you have any examples that you see in other towns? Maybe like a percentage of your unrestricted government aid, or something that could make sure that we have a revenue source that goes directly to the... Because historically, and we've worried about this even when I was on finance committee, historically, we have not funded OPEB, and that's been a problem for borrowing and other issues, so some sort of... If you have a model or any... If you've seen anything?
It really comes off the backs of the taxpayers, you know, and that's just another thing that gets low-hanging fruit that gets pulled off early. And I don't... There's no magic wand for regionals. I know the regionals are in tough positions, much more than... I mean, the vote tax seem to be getting all the money these days, and municipalities, you know, they all take care of their own, so the regional struggle of anybody, of any school district. But I don't have an answer for that one, but if I did, I'll keep thinking.
Soon you get Taylor Swift to come here. I can actually email Mars to the listserv and see. It's a good question.
And add that into the regional agreement as a commitment. Yeah.
Thank you for the report. The one question I have is we went... Or you just went through seven or eight steps we took in regards to FY '25 and closing out that deficit. Does that change the number that we took out of circuit breaker reimbursement last meeting, or is that just...
The specific numbers, I'll have to get from my office, but I can tell you that we didn't touch... We had some circuit breaker money left over. It has not impacted '26 circuit breaker money that's coming in. That just... The first payment has recently come in, so it was past money that would have had to have been spent in this fiscal year.
Right, I guess my...
So we did not. The number that you wrote, we did not. We did not use that money.
So it did change the number. The number was not used.
The number was not used.
It feels like a significant development.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
It feels like that should be yelled louder.
That should have been like size 18 type ahead of this. I understand you weren't here last month for that discussion, but...
And we did not use any E and D.
All right, no E and D. Excellent.
No E and D. So just to clarify, we currently are prepared for any emergencies with our circuit breakers for unforeseen special ed costs?
We...
Because we have the circuit breaker money?
There's $2.4 million in circuit breaker in FY '26.
Awesome.
We have $2 million already encumbered in '26.
Okay.
Brian didn't want to speak to numbers, because he hasn't really had an opportunity to look at that, and he wasn't at the last meeting, but disregard what you voted, because that was... The business department, as is with Brian and John, were able to go through line by line and make sure things were exactly in the right spot, and I don't think that was ready for when I presented to you in September.
Okay, thank you. Steph?
So first of all, thank you. I would want this job that you have.
Oh, I love the word.
I'm glad you love the numbers. The numbers that I don't like are the percentage used. Total tuition to mass schools, 848.5% is on here. We've got some of the other things. Even the school committee legal services is at 99.4%, and we are in step... So I guess I'm just concerned about these 231.5% and 167% of the money used. Do I need to be nervous, or are we...
So I can help you out with that. With one of them, the tuition to mass schools is encumbered, but we get the circuit breaker money quarterly, so that's where that's going, that's all committed to there.
So that means it's like a credit card. We have credit card debt?
So it's an encumbered, we pay the tuitions upfront, we have to guarantee the tuitions, and by June, we have to satisfy that tuition.
Okay.
So, and what Brian said, the first circuit breaker payment just came in for the quarter one, two, three, four, but the school wants a commitment on their tuition. They don't want to say, "Hey, what's the minimum payment you're gonna make this month?"
Okay.
In terms of legal expenses, that money's been encumbered, it's only $6,000 has been spent. We just put a lock on it so no one can grab it.
Correct.
So I'm just looking at percentages used, and it's just a little bit...
But some are over, some ones are over.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, so encumbrances are money that are just... It's been... It's got a pin in it.
I hosiety.
Yeah, and that's what they're gonna be doing, is looking at all this stuff to see.
It's a big job.
For example, we...
Oh, no. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So just...
I'm making sure it's...
Still finishing the...
Okay, so that doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to spend it all, it just means you can't spend it someplace else and move things around.
Like graduation, the high school principal's gonna encumber flowers for graduation, or tent, whatever they need for expenses. So come the end of the year, they know they're gonna have graduation, because in the meantime, someone might, you know, try to get some pencils out of them.
We'll discuss the graduation cost in a little bit.
Okay. Sorry to break up my head. Whoops. So with them.
So just to be clear, when we see total legal services for school committee, that is for all... The legal service is always for every legal services is the school committee's legal service, is that correct? So we hire the attorney, the attorney is the school committee's attorney, so this includes other legal for negotiations, for everything else. Okay, thank you.
It's legal expenses. It really should be district legal expenses.
District.
I'll echo the sentiments from other people. Thank you. I do have a couple of quick questions. Is... Is TMS, is that...
The Management Solution.
TMS, the representative here at Whitman Hansen, is you a member of your team? You and a team? What is your...
We have a team. I have a woman that's gonna... Munis expert.
Okay.
She's been assigned to this district. We have another woman named as Margo. She'll be supporting me, but we have a team, it's probably 30 employees, and we kind of... Like, for example, there'll be a lead in each district. You know, we have a whole, you know, a pack of accountants and payroll people and Munis...
The workdoers in the background.
Do work in the background.
Yeah, gotcha.
But I'm the person, I'm the face of...
You're the face here. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
You go through me to get to them.
Yeah. And then I have two questions, and I'm not 100% sure if they're supposed to be directed to you or to the administration. But what is TMS's involvement with the revised 2026 line item budget? We voted a budget that was at a specific amount that had to then be reduced in order to meet the town's appropriations amounts defeated at town meeting, all that good stuff. I do not think we've seen a line item budget that showed those deductions. Is that something that your team is working on, or is that something the administration...
That's something we're working with together.
Okay. Do we have any kind of timeline?
So, that's what Brian was talking about payroll right now.
Yeah.
Actually itemizing to make sure everybody's in the right spot.
Okay.
And that's, so in your memo too, Brian's talking about the crosswalk right now. So, the challenge we have in district is, we have Harper's as our payroll company, and they have different codes than Munis. So, if I pull Harper's report, they always don't, the people are there, but the account numbers are different. So, if Kara's a para, maybe a conly, she might be here in Harper's at this account number. But in Munis, what we, the reports you guys get, it's a different thing. So, the crosswalk we're working on right now, and it's been for two years, is so that Harper's and Munis talk together, so it's one account line. So, if we run a report like this, you can see line by line, and it's matched up. All the other accounts outside of payroll are perfect, but the account numbers are different in the other areas. And as he said, that's pretty much all done, but it's been a two-year process. And again, we pulled in Harper's at the time of the breach, so they helped us there. It's a good company. It might not be the best, because Munis actually has a payroll function. But right now, the crosswalk is very challenging. So, when, before Brian got here, I had payroll pulled, and I'm trying to see where it matches up. And the people match, and the numbers are right, but they're in the wrong areas on both. So, it's more of a challenge that we're working on.
So, there is still work being done there, and there will be a revised 2026 budget presented with those, with the difference from what we had originally voted and what ended up getting accepted by both towns.
Correct.
Okay.
But one thing you got to remember, Chris, is that also during the year, things come up and things get moved.
Totally understand all that, but as it stands right now, the only budget document that's out there that exists is the preliminary one that got voted down.
That's correct.
And so, I want to make sure we get something that is accurate to the plan.
Right.
If not necessarily to the day-to-day expense. That's fine. The second question I have about that is, when we voted, or when we planned the 2026 budget, that was, did that number include assumptions of the new teacher's contract, the new unit A contract? So, does that, those numbers there are reflective of what was in that contract and what eventually ended up being? Or did we make an assumption at X percent, and they agreed to a contract at Y percent? So, now we need to revise that as well.
So, my understanding was that the numbers in the budget that we had are reflective of the contract that was voted.
Okay.
Okay? So, yes. However, as Brian digs in, I want to make sure that they are reflective of that, and the appropriate numbers were put in the right spot.
So, yeah, I guess that was more my question is, you know, when that budget was voted, the contract had not yet been approved. The contract got approved after that.
Yep.
Want to make sure everything's aligned.
We made some assumptions, but the number that was voted in the contract, the contract number should be equitable within the 26 budget.
Thank you. Thank you.
Karen. No, I just, I believe I asked that question to the former business director at the time that we were voting on the unit A contract. And the answer that I think the committee got at that point in time was it was factored in. So, I appreciate kind of the audit to confirm that that is indeed...
Correct.
All right. Okay. Brian, I guess we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you're doing. Great work.
And Brian's been great to work with. You know, he's been, he's been in probably more than he should be personally with the contract, but he's been really good to work with, running some ideas by him, by us. And we're going to get you as much information as we get it to make informed decisions as we go. But I also wanted to say, let's not lose sight of 27. I know we were finishing 25. We're in the midst of 26, but it's October. And I know certain finance committees in Whitman will be saying, so when do you want to meet with us? And that's a good thing, but we will start, and first question Brian said to me when he came in, he goes, where are you at with 27? And I said, geez, I'm trying to finish 25. But he's like, start this process now, and he's not wrong. So, we will be talking about it.
Can I also make the plea again for the Hanson finance committees to also be liaising with you as soon as possible?
Yep. I think that's important.
I think it's going to be important.
Before...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Before we go on, I'd like a little latitude with moving some things that we're going to be doing, because we do have some very important items that have to be voted tonight.
Okay.
So, if we don't get to certain things, you know, if there's a lot, we might have to, you know, put in that second meeting that we've talked about that we might need to do. Hopefully, we can get through everything. But I know policy committee has something that we have to vote tonight, because it has to be presented by the end of October. The MASCE resolutions have to be voted tonight, because, and we have to vote for the person who is going to represent us at the, during the meeting, the business meeting at MASCE. And also, those, and the regional agreement, of course, has to be discussed as far as our discussion, because we are not voting on it tonight, but we're discussing it. The other questions, I, you know, would like to make sure we do get to too. We have athletic questions. We have graduation questions. But, you know, I know that everybody wants to talk about all these things, but let's be respective of each other's voice, that everybody gets a chance. So, once, we ask you to be, with your comments, very succinct, so other people can also comment, so that the meeting can run efficiently and get things done. Like I said, you know, I'm sure when you looked at this, you went, oh, we have a lot to do. And yes, we do. So, let's try to move on. So, did you say...
I don't know. I was going to go to regional, but Nikki can be quick.
Okay. Nikki, want to just get yours over? Okay.
And it's also good news. Good news is good news.
And you might care about it in the news, good news. So, I would like to just have, be able to tell the committee...
Pull your mic down a little bit, Nikki. Thank you.
Tell the committee and tell the public before they read it in the newspaper. So, I'm very pleased to announce some exciting news for our district. Whitman and Hanson Regional School District has been selected as a recipient of the Bar Foundation's Strengthening School Leadership Grant of $200,000 over the next 20 months. With Superintendent Simon Act and Assistant Superintendent Farrow's support, I wrote a proposal in June. We advanced to the interview round, which Mr. Farrow and I completed in July, and we received our official word last week. The opportunity will provide funding and partnership support to help us continue building leadership capacity, instructional alignment, communications, shared accountability across all our schools. The money and the budget have been determined, and we look forward to working with our partners and making our school and our district continually successful. That's it. Quick one.
Yeah. And to explain, it's for the, our leadership groups, and PD for them, basically.
This will involve principals, assistant principals, curriculum coordinators, and 10 future leaders. So, our district, we're very fortunate in this district that we have a number of teachers who are interested in how to pursue administrative roles or licensure. And so, there will be an application process for those individuals as well to be a part of this. So, when I say the money is allocated, there was a budget I had to put in a proposal and say what we will be using this $200,000 for. And there will be deliverables, which I'll report out to you all throughout certain timelines. But the money is intended to work with, we already know we're working with attuned collaborative, educational collaborative consultants, and we'll be looking for our own partner as well for the district. And it's basically what we looked at, and what I really was hoping for was, we have a lot of wonderful principals. You all know that within the next five years, we'll be retiring and moving on. And we have a lot of great assistant principals waiting in the wings, so to speak, to take over leadership. And what do we want to look, that to look like as we move on? And so, we kind of thought to ourselves, let's create a vision together. We have our ethic, we have our vision, we have our mission, but let's get together with an outside consultant and help us move forward, so that when we, whoever we lead this to, this wonderful place that we've all put a lot of heart and soul into, that somebody can take that on and continue the work we've done. And so, our assistant principals, there's some great people who I think will take over the mantle, and as there are coordinators, these future teachers, future leaders amongst the teaching force, they know this district. They care about it, just like I kind of grew up in this district. Jeff was here, George is here. One of the things that really stood out to the bar was that fact, when we said, George's been here since 2004, I've been here since 2008, Justin's 2010, they said, that never happens. People don't do that anymore. And it really, it really spoke to them. And I feel like we have that in the district still. And so, we want to look at those people and say, we see you, and let's continue what good work we hope can be left for us. So, that's what it is.
Thank you, Nikki. Thanks.
One quick question. Is this, is this is grant funding? This does not require any investment upfront or whatever from the district? So, I mean, that's just something to highlight in this time of fiscal, you know, conservatism going on within the two towns. This is an example of the administration really working towards finding ways to self-finance some of this stuff, and I applaud that. That's fantastic. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for doing that. All right. So, we'll go back to the discussion, I guess.
Yep, I guess so.
All right. So, we're going to have the discussion on regional agreement review and next steps. And we'll go with questions first, if people have questions. And I know Chris and Hillary were on the committee, so...
Can I just pause with process?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just letting you know, this isn't like a done deal. There's a process that takes place. So, the regional agreement committee was formed three years ago. I feel like five years ago, because it was, there was one five years ago as well, prior to 2020. This has been in place for about three years. So, the regional agreement committee, subcommittee, then puts together a draft that goes to the select board in each town and the school committee for questions, review, whatever. If there are questions, that then goes back to the regional agreement committee to fine-tune to bring it back here. The process after that, if it goes, if everybody's on the same page to say, yes, our questions are answered, it goes to, and I believe we agreed at the regional agreement, it's going to go to school council, our legal team, not to each town's legal council first. It goes to school council first, instead of having three different sets of lawyers looking at that. So, it goes to school council. If school council feels it's okay, we're going to send it to the two town councils to see. Then it comes back. Then it's voted by the school committee and both select boards, okay, to then go to the commissioner's office. DESI commissioner will review that. If they kick it back for support, then it will go to a town meeting for a vote. If both towns pass it, it then goes back to the commissioner with the vote of approval from both communities. So, there's multiple steps still to take place. But after the regional agreement committee has met, they put together a draft. This is your first read of that draft, first discussion of that draft, but it still has to go to legal. It still has to get a vote of all boards. It has to get approval from the DESI commissioner. Then it has to get approval of town meeting, and then it's signed off by the commissioner before it can take place.
Any questions about process? No? Okay, Ryan?
I said, well, I have two things, and one might be a typo, but I feel like it needs clarification. So, on the second page, item three, it says, "All committee votes shall be by two-thirds majority, full membership unless otherwise indicated by law or regulation." And then it lists nine votes. And so, it seems like that's an incongruous thing, saying all votes would be two-thirds, and then listing nine that would, I'm assuming that these nine items are the things that would be changed to two-thirds vote, that it's not all votes being two-thirds. Correct?
Yes.
So, that's a mistake in the language, right? Because it says, for one reason, it says number three, "All committee votes shall be two-thirds." Do you see what, am I misreading this?
So, should it say, "All of the following committee votes shall be two-thirds"?
Yes. Okay, yeah. Yeah, so changing that to like, yeah, the following...
Correct.
Committee votes, okay. So, that's just, that was just something that just didn't make sense to me, like, and just a, and then I know, I mean, obviously, like, it seems like from things we've heard tonight and things that we've heard at select meetings, select board meetings, well, that's the other thing I just wanted to mention too, that it does refer to Whitman as having a selectmen, and we have a select board now, so that's just a language thing that's...
That was amended at one point, too.
It was.
Yeah. So, that's just something I noticed that I figured I'd bring up. But regarding transportation, this is not related to the, my question about it is not related to, I think, the assessment, the formula of the assessment, so much as the way that the assessment is delivered to the two towns. Because right now, it's sent as a separate...
The non-manding.
The non-manding, right, the non-manding. That's why, I'm sorry.
Specific, yeah.
The non-mandated busing has been sent to the two towns as a separate item.
Yes.
Why do we do it that way? And, because that just seems to me to be, as we enter in more like tricky financial times for both towns, that just seems to be something that, because there's no other item in the school budget, that especially when this is so important, is transportation, that we give the towns a line item veto on. And it seems like that's, that could be a problem, that a town could very well, especially if one town does it and the other town doesn't do it, creates inequity issues. So, my question is, why, as a committee, do we give the towns a veto on such a big part of our budget, separate from the entirety of our budget?
Well, it's only the non-mandated.
Right, the non-mandated.
It's a very small part of our budget, actually.
Right. But I mean, like, it's, you know, I mean, it could be something that, I mean, there was a couple of years ago, Whitman Town Meeting, that there was discussion of eliminating it. And I just, I don't, I don't know why we give, especially we view transportation as such an essential part of, I mean, it is an essential part, like, getting the kids here is the, you know, nothing could happen if they can't get here. And so, I just, I wonder why that is still in the transportation part of why we do it that way, because it does seem problematic to me.
The discussion in Jeff, and I don't know if Chris or Rosemary, if which one of you was on the committee, when we talked about this specifically, concerns were that if we put a non-mandated, so technically, that is a cost that we don't have to pay for, because it's non-mandated, into the full school budget, we would have to cut other things. Because if it's presented to the town, so in Whitman, I want to say that it's like $200,000, right-ish?
Yeah.
So, we would then be asked to cut $200,000 of our assessment, because we are often asked to cut from our assessment. So, then it becomes, well, what are we cutting, and how are we doing this? That was the part of the conversation on the regional agreement committee.
Because I would say in Whitman, there will be six school committee members at that town meeting, and probably, usually, there's either superintendent or superintendent there to explain that that cost difference from the assessment, this reflects that the busing is, the non-mandated busing is part of it. So, it does seem like, I just worry about the idea that if one town, also, I mean, how long is the bus contract?
We're renegotiating next year.
So, but like, in a situation where, how long, are they usually, three-year contracts?
Three-year with you, with you, a two-year extension.
So, if in the middle of that, Whitman decides not to pay for non-mandated busing, the district still has to, there is fees associated, I'm assuming, with making changes mid-contract as well. So, I, it just doesn't seem to be very prudent to give, for the sake of not, of having to explain that that line item of the school assessment went up, but the line item of the non-mandated busing was absorbed in that and is no longer there, it seems like that's an easy thing to explain to town meeting floor without having to give...
You've been to a town meeting, right?
What?
Listen, I understand what you're saying totally and completely, but I mean, I...
In theory, we could make the assessment lower every year by just taking other things out of the, out of the assessment.
Not your turn.
Like, curriculum is a separate line item.
Of course.
You can do all these things, and that could lower the assessment. So, if the idea is making the assessment a nice number, that seems like a bad trade-off to potentially risk our non-mandated busing.
I think I could go back to, well, first of all, Whitman has never not voted for non-mandated busing. But if you, one of the important things that I look at is non-mandated. You don't have to have it. You don't have to have it. And that, you know, I think that's what they looked at, because everything else we have, everybody has to have it. But that part, you don't have to have. So I think that's part of why it was in different.
But don't we, as a committee, vote whether we have the non-mandated busing or not? It's not a town decision, right? We, as a school committee, do we, don't we vote whether we offer non-mandated busing, and then we send a bill to the towns for it?
And then they ultimately, same as our assessment, they say yes or no.
But then they can say no.
Right.
So, I mean, the ultimate vote is at the town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, it's not a, you know, we can say yes, we want it, but they can say no, you know, but they never have. And it's actually, the numbers have gone way down in the past few years.
But I'm just saying, I just know that, like, things are looking rocky, and that could be an easy way to, town meeting, to save a couple hundred thousand dollars of expenses, and then now we have kids who can't get to school. And I think that's something that is, you know, like, and so, while I, I understand what you're saying, and obviously, that is, you know, I just worry about kind of counting on the past practice of Whitman always voting for non-mandated busing, maybe not coming, maybe that being something that doesn't always hold true. And then we have kids that are in situations that they, they have difficulty getting to school. I, last year, I was coming from dropping my daughter off, and I saw a mother on her child's bike with the kid on the handlebars, because he missed the bike, he missed the bus, and she was riding the bike there. And I mean, that's, that was obviously just a missed bus situation, but like, she didn't have a car, how is that mother getting that kid to that school? Because she did, she lived under a teen, close enough to the school that she would not be mandated busing, but far enough away that it would be difficult for her child to get to school every day without non-mandated busing. So I just worry about, like, if we, as a committee, I mean, it's one thing if we, as a committee, decide that we don't think that that's, the vote of the committee is that that's not an important or a fundamental thing to have, that's one thing. But if we're saying as a committee that this is, that it's, the name of it is non-mandated, but we believe it is, that it is necessary and required, but then we're giving that vote to the towns, it just seems to me to be, it seems to be problematic, and it worries me.
What is our alternative?
Well, just make it as part of the operating assessment, and assess it to the town as part of it.
But then they could still say no?
They could say no to the whole budget, though.
Okay, at that point, they'd have to say no to everything.
Well, yeah.
And then we have to come back and renegotiate it.
Just remember, you're adding like 300,000 to our operating budget, so...
But then we'd be removing that from the line item on town meetings. So it's, it's a six of one, half of the other, but it does...
To people who understand it, and that I think is a problem.
But I think that, I guess, all right.
Ryan, son?
They're only going to see the money.
Just, just to be clear, Ryan, what you're describing is what our current agreement tells and what the law says. It's supposed to be part of the operating, it's a capital, it's a cost. And I think, I want to thank Ms. Byers for sending in that email, going over what we're supposed to be doing and what we haven't been doing. The discussion, I was in that meeting, the discussion was, one, one person felt the way that Ms. Hillary described, but a lot of people felt the way that you described. Now, I voted against the busing, partially for that reason, in that, because this is, I, I agree with you completely. I think we have finance committee members that are competent, and we have Jeff, who's competent, who can get up on the town hall floor and honestly represent what, that the cost has increased, you are not spending it here, we're just putting it here, it's the same amount, it's a simple, easy thing. Ultimately, if we vote it down, it then comes out of our entire budget to provide it, right? Because we have the same expenses. It's a very risky, unnecessary move to keep it outside of the operating budget. Now, so I have to agree with you, but I, I do think that it might serve a secondary purpose, that, that is to perpetuate doing something that's been improperly done over the years. We have been improperly applying, just like we did with the statutory method, the busing billing, it was supposed to be 60, 40 the whole time. So I do think we need to have this reviewed through DESI and others. I think there has been a conversation, Ms. Byers spoke to DESI again, and in an open manner, that not one person, but we're, you know, maybe DESI comes in and talks to us about this. DESI did say that there were things in our agreement we were supposed to fix. This agreement right here, which was really a problem, and we're in this committee, nobody talked about this in the regional agreement, when we tried to talk about busing. Personally, I felt like I was shut down every time, and they were sidetracked, and it was not really allowed to sort of address these things. I know that when I, I watched committee meetings with Ms., so Tina, again, was not allowed to discuss this impact, particularly towards educational spending money. Every move we make has to be about student achievement. It has to be about getting kids to school at the most effective, in the most effective way. It has to hold each town accountable to their constitutional obligation to properly, aggregately fund their children. It should not be about this town or that town. It should not give a deal in any which way. It should be honestly done, and I don't think it has been. And I want to point to the last time we did not aggregately and appropriately fund things, we ended up in the lower one percentile. Fixing that one aggregate system problem brought us the largest per pupil spending increase in 30 years. We starved our children of funding through these simple formulas, and we blamed each town. Follow the law, follow the standard rules, don't make any other ways to divert money in education, and that's what's best for students, and that's what we're here to do. This agreement veers from that. It makes Whitman representation impotent. It is a problem. It veers from true democratic process within voting. It really needs to go back to the table completely and rethink it towards student achievement, because it hasn't been. It's been thought towards politics, it's been taught towards eroding money, again, outside into a quagmire of a regional agreement. We need to start going back and see what other people do, and do it appropriately, do it aggregately, and make real effort towards funding these kids. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ruth Hare. Stephanie?
Hi, I'm hoping to have three quick questions with answers.
Hopefully, next time.
On page three, section three, A, Regional School District, I just, there's an error in that Whitman Hanson is not isolated, so I just love line three, that correction should be made. In section B, it mentions 20 years, and I, I thought that with the new middle school, we had to have a longer term than that?
So, and Jeff, you could probably speak to this more than I could.
So this language, this language is right from Mars and DESI?
Because they don't agree. So MA, not, the building association, and DESI don't agree. They don't have the same lease terms that you're supposed to. So this probably took us three months to come up with language, send it back, figure out what we're going to do. So this is from Mars, and it's basically all of them saying, here's the best you can do with what you have, because they don't, and it's, it doesn't make any sense that DESI says you should have this, and MA, and the building, MSBA, says you should have this. So, and that's, that's out of our hands as people on the regional agreement committee, so this is what the people who make those things told us to do.
It's just not going to be, it's not going to be a problem with MSBA, right?
No, that's why.
That's why it says that.
This actually was one of the pieces that went to legal, because, because of that issue, MSBA is like a 50-year lease, DESI says you can only do a 20-year lease, so the language is anticipated use for 50 years. So that means Whitman can't take Whitman Middle School and make it a senior center.
Okay.
You know, in year 20, anyway.
Super, all right. And then on page six, I just have a question, where it says, "Operating budget costs, which includes capital, debt, and transportation, minus chapter 78 is calculated by DESI. Is there any way that we can add in the, because chapter 78 is assessed per town, correct?
I'm not assessing, what's your question?
Is chap, chapter 78 is per town? Whitman gets their allotment, Hanson gets their allotment?
It's the district, right?
We get chapter 70 as well, like, that's our allotment as well.
Okay, so, but you get, Whitman, Hanson School District, Regional School District, gets a chunk that's Whitman and a chunk that's Hanson.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, is there a way for us to make sure that the chapter 78 that comes from Whitman is attributed to Whitman's portion of the assessment, and that Hanson's is assessed, is credited to Hanson, rather than it coming off the top?
But it doesn't come like that. It, it comes to the district? And what you're suggesting would mean that students from Hanson who attend Whitman schools because of the programs that are in some of those schools, or conversely, students from Hanson, Whitman, rather, who attend Hanson schools because of some of the programs in those schools, what are we going to do with that, with the money there and things like that? It comes to the district, the chapter 70, right?
Yeah, so, so that first line, chapter 78 as calculated by DESI, that's where we start our statutory method, that's the first number. So they give us the, that's the chapter 70 we get, and below that is what the towns are required to, to assess, or to give us.
So it comes off at whatever the statutory rate is?
So we get that, that's why, you know, and we've explained that to some select board members, when, why can't we get a budget in November? Because the number we get from DESI for our statutory aid, or that first step of the statutory process, comes out the last week of January. So when we present our budget in February, that's hot off the press. We can make a guesstimate of aid, and that's what we've done in the past.
Especially if it's harmless.
But, but, that being said, the official number is where we start. And that's, you know, Ms. Hill brought back up the old assessment methodology, that's where we found in the past, it didn't start there. So every year, we get a new assessment number from DESI that starts that statutory methodology. And that's why, this is, this is why we outlined it here, because the previous agreement didn't have the statutory method outlined in the agreement.
Okay, so, so let's say, let's say it's $100,000, just for kids.
Sure.
Easy math. So that would mean, you know, 60,000 approximately would be Whitman's portion of it, and 40,000 of it would be, I mean, like...
Per pupil.
But, but...
Not, not really.
So that comes, again, I don't know how they...
It's not the same statutory rate, right? So DESI, Whitman gets more chapter 70 money than Hanson gets. Accurate?
Yes.
I would assume so. I don't look at the numbers what Hanson gets and what Whitman gets. The issue that I'm hoping we're not going to challenge, because folks in Hanson have talked about the statutory method being very unfair to Hanson, because they're paying more, I've heard the wealth-based model before, and we're trying to make sure that whatever comes in in chapter 70 is district allotted. So not putting a price tag on, well, Hanson paid more here, or Whitman paid less here, or whatever, because that's going to be that. We get a lump sum number from, from the department, which was allocated out.
They don't split it up, Stephanie.
Is that, is that what you're looking?
They figure it out that way, but they don't say, oh, so, you know, this is how it goes, they give us the money.
And I could be, I could be wrong, because I don't do those numbers. You know what I mean?
But that's how they get it.
But I'm just, as far as the methodology, that's where we start, that's what the two towns are supposed to contribute to, to chapter 70, and I don't know specifically each one. And then it trickles down into the methodology, and what is outside the statutory method is under other expenses for the district.
So the chapter 70 money comes to the town, and then the town gives it to the district?
No.
No, it goes straight to the district?
We get it right away.
So if, if they give us $100,000, it's from both Whitman and Hanson, and you just take that off the top?
We get a check, yeah.
So...
Quarterly check from the state.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on any further thoughts of tomorrow.
Just to clarify. Before, we have other people first. You've already spoken, Cara.
I had a couple of follow-up points, I guess I wanted to make, and touch on a few things a couple of people said. First of all, I want to address Ms. Hill's comment. I think I understand your intention, but I just want to be really clear that the alternative assessment method was not illegal, it was a different method, it was not the preferred method. It was an allowable method.
The way we applied it was illegal.
Then, so I want to address that. The second thing is, my understanding was that part of the rationale, or the advocacy behind moving to statutory method was that it felt like a way to provide more equity, given that largely, that likely, because of demographics, more chapter 70 funds, if they were separated by town, was coming from Whitman. So that offsets that. Is that kind of, my memory serving correctly there?
Of why we went there?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so, backtracking up, I inherited this in 2018, and after a year of trying to figure out how the district assessed the towns?
Yep.
Our, our people that are, I want to say the professionals, said, you're using a hybrid method. So you're using statutory from down, but you're using the agreement method from the top. So again, taking the bottom number, nobody took the number that DESI gave us to start the statutory process, which seemed very inequitable based upon the numbers that, what George and I found.
Okay.
So looking at the statutory, again, two methods of assessment, agreement method, statutory method. The district was doing things through the agreement method, supposedly, not the preferred method by the state. We shifted over the 2018 agreement that was put out to the towns to vote, that was approved by one town, pulled back by one town, whatever, didn't define this as well as, as this agreement or proposed agreement does, to make sure that we are using the statutory method all the way through, so that there's an equitable breakup of the assessments to both communities. Because I will say publicly, it wasn't assessed correctly. When I turned in, we started the conversations and looking at the numbers, it was not a, not an equitable assessment. We rectified that, I think, through 19 to 20, to the amended agreement that I had the commissioner sign in 2020 in COVID, voting it out on the, on the town green out here.
Yeah.
Define the statutory method as the preferred method for the district until a new agreement is signed. So looking back at the 20, or 1992 agreement, right now, it's defined as statutory.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I think my other question, going back to Ryan's comment about transportation that I wanted to clarify, so if, so when non-mandated transportation goes to the towns, the towns then have the option of charging families for transportation, correct? For non-mandated transportation, and we do not have that option. So if we took that into our operating budget, we would not have the option, say, if we had to make budget cuts, of saying, it's going to be $300 a student per year if they want to get transportation within the district. The towns, however, if we keep it outside of our operating assessment, could then decide to make that charge?
For legally non-mandated, yes, the towns could take that up upon themselves, and that's been a discussion in both communities. Both town managers had said, we don't want a part of that at this point. Could revisit that conversation. But legally, we're responsible for the mandated piece of it, the other piece is, is outside of that. However, I, I agree with both sides. I don't want it to be a separate line item. However, the way we have broken it up, and the community seems to want it, at least the discussion within the regional agreement at this point, is still a separate cost. They don't, it's, it's, the non-mandated piece is, is a mileage piece, however, billed to the town specifically, not in the assessment, or not in the operating assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, do any towns bill parents for non-mandated busing?
Yes.
Well, most towns don't have to. Manded busing in a region is very different than a locality. So East Bridgewater can charge whatever they want for middle school students and high school kids to come to school.
Indifferent for each family?
Well, they set a rate.
You're a little further than me, sweetie.
No, no, but they'll set a rate.
Everybody pays, everybody has to pay.
Set rate, if you want to take the bus, it's this much you can.
Correct. Elementary, they have to bus within a certain mileage area. However, middle school and high school kids, you're out of luck, unless you want to pay $600 a thing.
But what about mandated, non-mandated for elementary?
They don't have that there.
They, they have, they have to provide transportation for kids.
No matter where you live, no matter how close you are?
There's a mileage limit there, I can't quote that, because I don't look at towns, but I, I want to say it's a mile and a half or two. So you're an elementary kid, you have to walk to school, and they're not offering you a bus.
I walked to school my whole life, so.
But I'm saying, but it's, but it's very, but it's very different in a region, and again, the, the language in the law says you, you can bill up to a mile and a half away. So we've taken advantage of that within the region, or within the state.
But towns do charge families?
So it's, it's 600 bucks for a family in Pembroke, it might be 200 bucks.
600, wow.
You know, and that's, and that goes to the...
But we can't, because we're regional?
That's correct, right.
Now, non-mandated, if the towns or the school committee decided to do that?
Okay.
It would be a separate piece. We could manage that ourselves, however, it would be very challenging to determine who's paying and what. You know, and again, in our communities, if the towns don't want to support non-mandated, it's been their option to do that. The last conversation, again, I had with town managers was like, we don't want to inherit that, because we also put the students on the bus, so.
I have, I have a different question.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Why do we go up from 5,000 to 10,000 for the capital costs?
Just because that was put in in 1991, and, and cost of living has gone up. So basically, we agreed upon that, that 10,000 is an appropriate number from 5,000, 25 or 30 years ago. Didn't they discuss one specific incident?
Yeah, the water heater.
Water heater, yeah. That was above that threshold and caused a problem, and I think that's kind of why they...
Because we wouldn't get the approval quick enough.
So, so, I don't remember that conversation, but it was more along the lines of, we would cover $10,000 of emergency costs, anything above that is probably going to insurance anyway, within the community. But there, the, the crux of that was a little more for the district to absorb, and also communication with the town manager within an appropriate time to say, if this is going to go to insurance, or if we have to appropriate that through the, through the community.
No, I just wondered, because it makes us pay 5,000 more.
And I think, you know, that was something that, three years ago, we talked about, and said, yeah, 91 numbers are a little different than 2020, than four, 2023.
All right. All right, who else has a question?
Because we're writing all these questions down to bring back, our next meeting is November 4th or 5th, something like that. Yeah, I, I just had a quick question to, to what Cara was talking about earlier regarding the, the district not being able to, on non-mandated busing, assess some sort of fee. What is the mechanism, what is the statutory reasoning for that? Is that within our regional agreement, or that's just DESI doesn't allow it? So, so for non-mandated, we could, we could charge, and administratively, we said that would be a very problematic nightmare. Who pays? When the bus drives right by my house, I'm paying and you're not. Rosemary's not paying and you are, and the bus drives right by my house.[1788.08] by my house. So we've had those conversations, parents have had those conversations. You know, right now, everybody in town, and I think it's important that if you're a mile and a half away, the state actually pays for your buses. If you're under a mile and a half, or a mile and a half to, a half mile, the towns pick it up. The taxpayers of the towns pick up that bus, and we're not reimbursed for that. And again, state reimbursement has gone from 64% to 95% to 83%, and that's when we're calculating those reimbursables is also challenged.
And it was supposed to be 100.
So, I'm sorry, just to go back and clarify for a second. What Cara said was that the district could not charge, we're not allowed.
You're saying we can't charge, you chose a not to.
We've not.
For non-mandated.
Well, that's what we talked about the whole time. The school committee could say, the district, we want to charge $300 per pupil between zero miles, and, you know, you're across the street on Franklin Street, and a mile and a half.
Okay.
You could do that.
Okay, that's definitely.
We just don't have a mechanism to do that. And again, the towns didn't want to inherit that. And again, administratively, I don't, I'll say an I statement, I don't want to inherit that either, because that's a logistical nightmare at our point right now.
The point I'm making is, I don't think that anybody wants to inherit that too.
Right.
But, you know, I listened to Ryan's point earlier, and I think it was well thought out and well stated, and I appreciate you bringing it up. And so when Cara says, oh, we're not allowed to do it, it's like, okay, well, that's a feather in the cap over here. But if that's not true, I'm left with, everything over here sounds good, and I don't have a thing I love over here. So, just curious, that's all.
One of the districts, a regional district that did charge for buses for non-mandated students was Bridgewater Arena, and it was a catastrophe.
I'm not suggesting that at all.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, as someone who has consistently been on this committee for four years, and the last year and a half that I have been chair, and we have consistently met, probably almost as consistent as when Chris Howard was in charge, we have gone through and looked at what other, what do other regions do, what's going to work best for us. And, you know, I, you know, I think we know we're charging for athletics and things like that. I just think it adds another tax onto families and stuff. And Bridgewater Arena is a really interesting look to see how it ruins what they did.
I'm suggesting more along the lines of bringing it back within the operating assessment, as opposed to leaving it and so on. So I don't want to charge anybody for it, regardless of where it is. I'm just suggesting that if that was an option, or wasn't an option, okay, that makes sense keeping it.
And that's what I wanted to clarify.
But if it's not, you know.
George.
I'll get back in.
George.
Just one more thing to make this very difficult decision more confusing. The fact that the students who get non-mandated busing get on the exact same bus.
Right.
As the students who were being reimbursed for, they do count in the 75% ratio of how much we need to fill a bus on any time state, any time, the timestamp that we have to do. So as a result, if this was to be removed, then you would be looking at less of a percentage. Therefore, if you remember like four years ago, you would be looking at different times and buses and routes and things of that nature.
Yes, Rob.
Just to add to that, it doesn't have to just be, if I'm correct, and it doesn't have to just be per bus. It can be per system, 75% per system. So if we are doing 60/40, like our regional agreement, like we were supposed to be doing all the time, we could do a per-system method that would allow for more flexibility with routes and possibly.
We can do a per-bus. What I'm saying is, we do it by fleet, the number of students held in the bus.
Seats.
But if we take those students away, generally, that number's going to adapt.
Okay, then if we do it by fleet, then there might be, then we're going to have to sit and talk, because if the aid is then split out, and we're doing it by fleet, that means Hanson, Whitman kids are counted on maybe incomplete buses. Each bus has to be 75% if we're splitting out the aid separately. So I think maybe we have a conversation. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I just want to say, while I totally understand the idea of putting it into the operating budget, I think it's always easier at town meeting to pass something that's $200,000 than $200,000 more in the school budget, just because people are not always looking at all of those details. So I think giving it separate does make sense. I don't think that you could, it would be advisable for the schools to take on trying to charge, because then you have to pay somebody to monitor who's getting on your bus, and all of that, which is a mess. And then the other thing that I just want to say is, I was trying to follow the regional agreements. The 1992 agreement is 81 pages long. It is, I'm sure Jen didn't do this, it is scanned in, like hither, skither, and gone. It is next to impossible to follow, and I really think that it would be advisable for us to have the entire thing rewritten as, you know, I mean, it could be word for word, but it needs to be retyped so that it's in a document.
That's what this is, Stephanie. This is instead of '92. 2018 was instead of the '92.
This is now the 81-page document?
What was?
The 81-page document has come down to this.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
This is pretty much the document that was voted in 2018.
But you have to remember, there were schools on there that are no longer in existence. There are things that just weren't legal anymore.
There were whole sections that we.
The way from 81 pages to 13.
Well.
So it's 2018, so.
To 2018.
92 became irrelevant.
92 became irrelevant, that's correct, Lynn.
But the last one isn't an entire document.
Yes, signed documents, signed.
It's not. It's just certain sections that got changed. It's just amendments. It's not the full.
She's right. She's right.
It does say amendments.
This isn't a signed document.
No, this is not a signed document, and if I can clarify, in 2018, 2017, in September, the former superintendent had a committee and went through the, you can see, there are videos of the regional agreement committee. They put together this document that we have now changed, but they amended from '92 to 18, which went in front of both towns to vote. And in one town, it was approved after it went to the boards of selectmen, after it went to Desi, after it went to Legal. One town approved it, one town held it, and then the other, the town that approved it pulled it back.
Are you talking 1992 to 2018?
So 2018, this is the document that was approved at a town meeting.
Okay.
Which was approved and then pulled back.
But that's not what I'm saying. When I look on our district website at the original agreement.
Yeah.
From 1991.
The one we're under.
It is 81 pages long.
Correct.
When I look at the next one, there are amendments to certain sections, but it doesn't take and consolidate the entire 81 pages into 13. This, I'll double check. I don't think that it is every.
Has there been a regional agreement reprinted since '91? A full, complete regional agreement?
I'm not sure.
Like one we could hold, like essentially saying?
This is this. This is the one that was presented to both communities.
So if you want to know, if you wanted, if I want to know every single thing about the regional agreement, I can find it here. Every bit of it. This is it.
I'm just pulling it up right now, and the document I see is 14 pages.
Did I have the 2018 one?
No, this is 1992.
Yeah, that's the one I looked at earlier.
It's amended agreement 1992.
The one that's on the website is not 81. It was not 81 pages, the one I looked at.
It's 14 pages.
So I don't, I don't.
I'm sure. Amended as to read as hereafter set forth. So the 81, no, the 81-page agreement is null and void.
Okay.
I think. I'm not a lawyer.
As of '92.
They just took out buildings, is really all they did. They didn't need too much more.
And again.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that, you know, I.
It's not going to be voted tonight.
No, and I think Chris and Hillary have heard comments. You have to bring it back, because we don't vote. We just give comments. Everybody's commented who needed a comment. They can bring these back and go with whatever. The two select boards have their comments and discuss and redo, or whatever. I think we've done a good job. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Very good. Good job.
Thank you for the committee.
Good job. Yes, and I thank you for all the hard work of trying to do things with, working with two different towns. We know it's, it is a difficult thing to do. So what I'd like to do now is to skip to the MASC resolutions to consider, and I'll explain a little bit about this. First. Yeah, we got, well, that's what I was going to say. So first, we're going to do this. One person who is going needs to be designated as the person to vote during the joint conference on Friday at the business meeting. Stephanie?
Yes.
Would you like to be the voting person?
Actually, I would like to nominate Ms. Hill.
Oh, is I going?
I'll be going. I have to sign up, though, yes.
Oh, you are going?
Yes, I'll be going.
Okay, well, I didn't, no, that's why I was offering it to Stephanie.
Thank you.
Because I thought it was just her and I, and I have to leave earlier on Friday to a previous commitment, but.
And I think I will be letting anybody, should I, I can sign up myself, or?
Yeah, well, Jen's leaving on vacation tomorrow morning. She's going to Italy, so.
She should probably sign up herself.
I'll sign up myself, Jen. Thank you. What? So you can just sign me up on the 20th? Okay, thank you so much, Jen.
Okay. All right. So Rosemary, you'd be willing to be a voting member?
We don't need to vote. You don't need to vote. I think you're good.
So.
I mean, you can do an official.
No, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for a volunteer. That's fine.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, so I will put you down. Well, Stephanie, would you be an alternate in case Rosemary can't make it?
Sure.
Okay, because they asked for an alternate. So I will get this, I will sign this, and that can be sent in. Very good. So now you have a packet of the resolutions. So what happens is, when you go to these, they go through, these resolutions are moved, they have a committee, a committee that goes through a lot of the resolutions, and some are not accepted, and some are. And then there's a lot of the whereas, and whereas, and stuff. And sometimes if you look at the bottom, where it be resolved, and it says what they would like to do, it tells you also, these are submitted by different school committees. And then what happens is, these get read, and these get discussed, and then voted, just as if you were at a school committee meeting. What our job is to give our recommendations to Rosemary on how she should vote, okay? Whether we agree with it or not, or we're really just abstaining from that. You can abstain from it, you don't have to, if we don't particularly have any opinion one way or another. You can, you know, also let the person who is voting to make the final decision after hearing information that's presented at the, you know, during this voting procedure. So the first resolution is removing BMI testing from school, and that.
Yes.
Do we have to go on that? Do we have to have a big discussion on that?
I'm going to abstain from voting, because I'm going to be the voter. I hope you don't mind. I'm just going to.
Yeah, that's fine. Do we need to have much discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All in favor of having it removed? Okay, so you have your go on that one. Okay. Reauthorization on previously approved ones. These are amendments that they're done three years after their adoption. So it's, they're, they want to, sure, reauthorize these votes, okay? So these are, the reauthorizations are regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund, membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, preserving local governments of Massachusetts schools, personal finance literacy education, financial literacy education, which we do here, establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. So those were already voted and accepted, but they were voted with a time limit. So do you agree to have them keep going, is what the question is? How do you feel?
Yes, sure.
Do we vote individually?
No, no, you know, it's for those, all the, it's to, for previous approved resolutions, because they were approved by the voting members at a previous meeting, but they do, so, in other words, they haven't been finished yet. So we're looking to still work on that. How do we feel?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, that's it. Yes for you, Rosemary, on that one, and Stephanie too, just in case she doesn't make it. Okay, so the next one is regarding sanctuary law for transgender.
No, that was, that's that one, though.
That's why I was asking.
Oh, they're just explaining them all. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all of them now.
Yeah.
No, there's one.
It's all breaking down.
Last page.
No, there's more.
Got it.
Page four.
So it's more.
Resolution seven, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's fully adjusting Chapter 78 for inflation.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, God.
Okay, I'm not going to discuss that one. We're all.
That's a double-hander.
Yes, we have more, we have way more committee members than we used to.
This one passed 20 to none. That's weird.
Put two votes for that, Rosemary.
Stephanie, you can jump in. Stephanie, you can jump in for that one.
Okay, Resolution 8, equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs.
No, this is, I don't even understand this one. We just talked about how non-regional school districts can charge.
Can charge.
And we don't even get reimbursed 100%.
Right. It's really looking at big towns like Plymouth.
Yeah.
You know, big.
They can charge.
They can charge.
They have an expansive area in transportation.
I want to just say that I wouldn't gauge everything by what we do.
No.
Because we can't see the needs of other districts, and I'm sure that this wouldn't have gone forward unless there was a need, you know, just because the kid doesn't live and Whitman in here.
Well, at the bottom two, it says that they have to apply from grants from this extraordinary roots relief fund, and the state shall conduct an annual review of the effectiveness and impact of this resolution to ensure that non-regional school districts are receiving adequate support. Well, I wish we were, you know.
We'll put in ours next year.
Wasn't there one? Wasn't there, there was one a couple of years ago.
Yeah, there was, yeah.
I would, I would.
All right, well, how do we, Stephanie, you have a question?
I guess my only concern with this is, I mean, on the one hand, I would like everybody to get everything they'd like, right? But on the other hand, the pot is only so big, and I feel like this might steal from our pot. So I would like to go.
I'm afraid of the opposite getting happy.
Yes, I agree with this. We, it's about the equity. And yeah, you could be right, Stephanie, and I'm not denying that at all. Yeah, you know, I, yeah, this extraordinary roots, what we have now, and taking it out of whether it's regional or not, I mean, some of these roots, it seems like, I don't know if the Garmio Transport is going to start up soon, but we need some help.
Okay, well, let's take a vote on this.
These are important information.
All right, how many?
There's really important information that we should probably be considering right now. Right now, we are getting a really great discount through mileage method. That's a method that is really delicate. They're talking about getting rid of it, because schools like this, actually the ones that are more eligible, Plymouth being one of them, if there's added money, if they're adding this, they're adding money. I would say it preserves what we're doing and helps us more than hurts us. So I'd want you to consider that, because the mileage method is something that is where they'll take the money if they don't have it for this. So I would, I would, I would look at this as more adding more into busing overall, not taking from this. But you do you. All right. Who, all right, raise
your hand if you're in favor of Resolution 8.
Wait a minute.
If you're in favor of it.
Of supporting.
You're supporting it. Do you support it?
You said you are, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, supporting it.
Thanks for the reminder.
Who are against it? Against it? Okay, against when? So we said no, sorry. Sorry.
Okay.
I'd love to hear the conversation, though.
Okay.
This is risky for us.
Resolution 9, MSBA grants evaluation for Chapter 74.
Oh, this is good.
I don't understand.
I don't either.
What is Chapter 74?
It's very short.
That's the CTE.
What is it?
Yes, that's the CTE stuff. Thank you. Good job.
I learn things.
So do they not differentiate now?
I'd say yes.
I don't understand.
I think, I think that there, it says creating an elevated, evaluated tier system separately assesses the cost. So that, I'm guessing that the MSBA does not.
Differentiate.
Differentiate right now between the different types of schools? And this is to say that they would.
Resulting to true cost reimbursement for each school category. So maybe MSBA is losing money, because they're not assessing that building a bulk school might cost more than So maybe MSBA is losing money because they're not assessing that building a bulk school might cost more than building a traditional high school, and they might be messing up on their own formulas.
And see, I just get touchy with vocational schools because it's written by a vocational school committee. So they're like, we're not getting bang for our buck.
Right.
So I'm hesitant, but I'm also hesitant based upon the Globe article that just came out that inner-city schools aren't getting the same MSBA consideration as suburban schools. So I'm wary on this. That's just me, and I don't have enough information right now.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be vocational, because this is just vocate, you know.
I'm wary on that.
Yeah.
We have a new building going up, but you're going to need new ones in the future.
Okay, who's for this resolution? Raise your hand. For, against? For, against?
Is it, is it... I'm against. If I'm a tiebreaker.
You're the one vote anyways.
What?
When you go, you're going to be those five.
We don't know what you're going to do.
You're the first five. I think it was five.
Who raised the hand for it?
No, but there was...
If I'm a tiebreaker or not?
No, I'm saying that I think that there's literally five against and four. I think so, too. I think it's not a tiebreaker. There's 10 of us here.
There's 10.
Four-four would have been somebody, someone else if it's...
So I'm the, I'm the not.
No, you're not. No.
No.
There was already five.
You made it five.
It failed. It's a no.
It failed. Five-four, four-five.
Okay, thanks for doing that, guys.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, no.
Okay.
We need to do the policy. If you want to stick to any third, you just have to do policy.
Oh, goodness, I guess we do.
Please.
Shoot. All right, Policy Subcommittee has something that we have to vote on also. Who is presenting?
George has his hand up.
Well, we need to get the policy presented, so yeah, we're going to jump to your policy piece.
I just want to get that book surplus.
Yeah, I think this is more important.
Let us do this vote first, and then we'll extend for the 15, and do a couple of things that we need to do, please. All right, who's to do the presentation?
I don't know.
I am. I am the chair of the Policy Committee.
Tell us what we have to vote for.
Okay, so I will give... Oh, sure. No, we love it. Thank you.
So as George is passing this out, if you notice, you're going to see more links attached to your agendas. We're trying to cut down on copy costs, okay? And everything's in gray because color costs nine cents a piece or 11 cents a piece.
10 cents.
10 cents a piece. I split it in the middle.
One link, one link is...
So we're really trying to cut costs.
So the Policy Subcommittee met today. We reviewed four policies. One was competency determination. The second was middle school pathway policy. The third was AI policy, and the fourth was review technology policies. The competency determination, AI policy, and technology policies, we are all going to be presenting next month to you. They'll be in your reading packet for next month. Glenn is my vice chair, just so that you know, and Karen and Ryan are also on the committee. However, I, because it is time-sensitive, I am going to ask that we approve to move to the full committee for a reading and potential vote, and waive the three readings, and read and approve tonight the middle school pathway policy because it is due by November 1st.
And just so that everybody else knows, because I've talked to Jeff about this, too. We do this already, okay? It's just not written down as a, you know, policy. But we have, you know, South Shore Botec, we have, you know, and these people come and talk, and so we offer these to the kids. We offer the pathways program, so this is something we do.
The only thing that's really being added in is that we're going to send an official invitation to the school, all the different, the pro gagging and whatever, for them to come.
Right.
So...
Yes.
Does anybody have any...
Yeah.
So here's the issue. The commissioner dropped this on us in August, okay? So by the time we could put the committee together, and he wants it by November 1st. It was October 31st, now it's November 1st. So it's not like we sat on this for six months. This came to us literally in August. We couldn't put it together by September because the Policy Subcommittee hadn't met, so here we are. The graduation, the competency determination was supposed to be October 31st. They pushed it to December 31st. So this is an expedited type of thing. We have to enter into the, into the department by November 1st. So sorry for the expedition, but we've got to move forward.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The MYCAP activities. So we have made cuts to the schools. Is this a policy? I mean, I sort of feel like I know the answer, but is this a policy that we are implementing that we... So when you look at MYCAP activities, identify personal strengths, interests, and career goals, explore a variety of high school and post-secondary options, make connections between coursework, extracurriculars, and future career opportunities. To me, I think the selfie class that my kids have at Henson Middle could probably cover this. So, but my question is, is the commissioner going to ask to see the curriculum of courses where this is happening? And if, if we don't have a course where it can happen, where are we doing this when we just made cuts?
So I don't think he's going to ask anything. He just wants the policy upfront for review.
Not this year.
And if we get flagged, that'll come after the fact. But he wants a policy written by every community, every school district in the Commonwealth.
But don't you think it's good practice for us to have these things embedded in anyway for when a parent looks at this policy? Yeah, that's what I was saying. It sounds like the selfie class probably could cover this stuff, but I just want... I want to say it for the people in the back, right?
We are asked to prove what we're doing for our MYCAP. We have that evidence. We talked about this in policy stuff today, which is, you know, because the policy is broad, we don't want to be specific. And for example, we used to have an aviance. Now we house our stuff in what's called SchoolLink. Obviously, we didn't put that specific title, because you might choose a different digital platform. But SchoolLink is the digital platform in which we house our, our students' career and college planning.
Interest inventories, do you interest inventories?
Yep, those surveys and stuff, yep.
All of that.
That's all part of the middle school curriculum leading up to in the eighth grade when you invite the other schools in for their exploration to move forward.
Okay.
And that, and that SchoolLink is, I'm assuming over middle, so it falls to kids.
Awesome. All right. I would make a motion to vote this.
Do I have a second for discussion? Second?
No, there's discussions.
Well, yeah, we can have discussions.
Then we can discuss.
Do we have a discussion? Questions?
Yes, yes. I want to recognize that our educational time is for the students to be educated on things within our program, and that we have other schools like Rockland that don't allow for during their educational time to transport students to another school to view it. I do agree that we should have accessibility and maybe some hands-on, maybe a program that shows it, that maybe a kid wants to go into a technical program, maybe a small example of what technology is. But to remove them, to have an absence, have them being a different sort of educational environmental than their peer during that day, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that that can be done on the weekend, the same program. Everybody could pick up at the high school, and that can be done on the weekend. But, you know, if you have got an English, a math test on that day, and that kid is going off to another school on that day, they're not taking that math test. They're not taking, they're not participating in the program that we have set up. So all middle school students will be provided with at least one opportunity to tour the school or program during regular school hours. I don't... That would mean that we're... They're missing our school hours, and I...
Well, as a teacher in the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, in the past, we did not give any tests on the day that we knew that the kids were going to...
You're very nice.
We did not plan. We planned around that type of stuff. I mean, we knew ahead of time when that date was going to be, and the teachers didn't do any testing on those days.
I think in the alternative, I'm still speaking on this.
Stephanie?
I'm still talking. Hi. Thank you. Thank you. In the alternative, having the kid, maybe having the program come to our school for the day or doing something.
That was part of it.
They do.
We said that they would all be invited here.
They do come. Well, I know South Shore Botec goes to school. Yeah, they come to the, they come to Whitman Middle. Yep, they do.
To me, this is no different than students getting a day, an excused absence to go on a college tour. This is an opportunity, the, for the kids who decide they want to explore South Shore, South Shore Botec. The South Shore Botec pays for a bus to come and pick those kids up. It brings them to that school, and it allows the kids to see what it's like in reality during a school day, which I will tell you, having done school, college tours, it's much different to go during the college, school day. Everybody's nodding. Than it is to go during the summer or during a weekend. So I 100% believe that it is worthwhile, and this is definitely something that is planned with the guidance department, and the teachers know about it when it's happening, and they plan accordingly. So I really don't think that it's that big of an issue.
All right. Yes, Nikki?
It does help with the conversations that were required to happen. Were required to allow, it's required, if you look at this line in accordance with the state regulations. So allowing them to go and not penalizing them, that's hard work.
I'm not asking for that, yeah. That was, that's not what I was saying.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I was saying...
Just to clarify, this policy is required that we now, it's also something we already done. We just now have to memorialize that this is what we need to do, that we even come on to have something on record.
Chris?
You know, and I understand where you're coming from. I do. I do believe 100 years ago when I was in high school, this was something that we did at Weymouth High, too. So I believe we did have the ability. The question I do have is, and I think I remember this happening when my son came up to the high school, is there a time for the incoming freshman?
During our day.
During the school day to come and visit non-CTE here?
Schools, Whitman Hansen.
I'll answer that. It depends on the availability of buses, and it depends on the cost, if I'm being 100% honest. Because we do have open houses that they can come to at night and everything. But the ability to do it during the school day has taken place, but it also depends on the ability of how your bus drivers, availability is split, and then the total cost.
I do, I do question the equity of it being available.
Well, South Shore Botec pays for the buses for this.
No, 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 right. No, I understand all that. The equitable availability. Like if a non-CTE student wants to come here and see what's going on during the school day, to, I forget who said, you said it about it being a much more valuable visit during the actual operating hours of the school. I worry about offering that to one group of people and not the other.
Yep.
And the IC will go there, too. Do they go down to Oakdale and just...
Same thing, in-building there versus in-building here are different things.
That's all I was saying.
Could we do something if...
So first of all, it is 8:35, so I would like to make a motion that we extend our meeting time so that we're not in violation.
To 8:45. We go by 15 minutes, so 8:45. Okay, all in favor of extending to 8:45? We might have to go longer. Yes, okay, yes.
And then, second of all, I believe that if a student wanted to come... I know when I was at Cardinal Spellman, I actually came and spent a day here at Whitman Hansen and went around with somebody two classes. We, the number of students who go and explore South Shore Botec versus the number of kids who would want to come here...
Were already going here anyway, yeah.
Is massive, so I just think that...
I just want to make sure that opportunity is available.
And quite frankly, while I understand the equity thing, this is the middle school pathway exploration policy. So we may at some point decide that because we have pathways here, that maybe those students interested in those pathways would be able to come, but we're not going to have every kid come here.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. That's a good, that's a good idea.
I made a good point.
You made multiple good points.
Stephanie, you have to make good points because they have to sign up for that program.
They made me the chair, Jack Devon.
That's going to be in the express.
Stephanie makes good points.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve has been made. Is there a second? No, we already had that, yeah. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, now.
Thank you.
All right, now, again, we have to do, George, we need that donation thing you said we have to do tonight.
Book surplus.
Book surplus. I mean, book surplus.
The Indian Head School this past year had a new classroom for special ed put in. As a result, that was in the classroom that their reading room formerly was. Their reading room, the teachers and the books got relocated to the library. As a result, we did a purge of the library books that are over 10 years old, that don't support the curriculum, and that are in very poor shape.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Do you have questions? All in favor? He's second.
Get me out of here. Talk, George.
Thanks, George. Thank you, George.
Thank you. All right, now, okay. We have other things here, too, guys. Can we do the, quickly, the donation of the friendship bench?
Sure.
Yes.
This is a movable friendship bench that they're planning on putting in the courtyard. And just to let you know, the student advisory council is thinking of doing something in the court to spruce it up. So that's one of the things they're thinking of doing. So this would be really nice to add to it, but it can be moved, so I need a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we got that done. Now, we had athletic questions, but...
Do you want me to just put them in for a reading item or no?
Yeah, we'll put it as a reading item. Do you want to just send it to everybody?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that.
Yeah, and then...
We can discuss it in...
We can discuss it another time. Stephanie, you...
Can I just, can I just pause? My self-assessments are a reading item as well?
Yes, it's in your packet.
So we can read through it, and then the South Shore Ed collab and the REETS collab is a reading item as well, okay? They're not really discussion.
Whitman Middle School is going. It's going well. Everything's going well with it. In fact, it was going ahead of schedule, so, yeah. And I, the reason I'm kind of rushing everybody is we do have, we have three, we have people who, by the end, we have two people who want to speak.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, I see in our packets your self-assessment, Jeff. Is the athletics information in here, too?
It is not.
No, he's going to send that to...
Okay, I want to be sure of that.
That's why I just asked if he could do that.
Yes, that's what I was...
Steph, the next one is you. Do you want to do that tonight? You want to wait till November?
I'd like to make a motion to hold off on e-graduation costs until next month.
November, okay, we'll put it on the November ballot. Would you remember that, too, please?
Yep, we got it.
Okay, so we have, I have two people for closing public comment. Justin? And then after Justin, it's Dawn.
That's why I don't communicate with you anymore. Hey, Brad, Justin Evans, 57 Candlewick Lane, Whitman Select Board. I was encouraged by Brian Hyde, I think he would be a good addition to help the district. But then I looked around the committee and saw that only Steve has been here since I was elected when Jeff and George had their first year. So I thought it a good opportunity to kind of flag why I'm encouraged by bringing in someone like TMS. You know, in the six-plus years that I've been on the select board, this is your fifth business manager. Two interims, three permanent, but fifth business manager. Following the breach, you felt three years behind in financial audits. Seems like you're finally catching up, but that, those audits cost your bond rating. The lack of a bond rating affected the ability to borrow for the Whitman Middle School project. You got permission to get a State House note, but the lack of financial history and some other concerns caused nobody to bid on a long-term note, and so you sought a short-term ban, which is coming due in a couple of months. You know, along those, the Whitman Middle School Building Committee is going great, but at the last meeting, there was, I would say, cash flow concerns with the next couple of months, are we going to be able to make it to this, that long-term borrowing?
We will talk about that. I have, I...
Oh, yeah.
I'm going against my policy here, but because I can answer you, because we're going to talk about it at the building committee.
Oh, good. Yeah, I would be out of town for that one, but I'll watch.
Oh, well, I'll let you know. I'll talk to you then personally.
But that was the second, at least the second time that we've raised cash flow concerns. I think there was one invoice payment vote back before this $30 million note where the, at least one member voted not to process the invoices because it was unclear whether there was enough funds in-house to pay, you know, waiting for MSBA reimbursements. That, the timing wasn't, didn't, we weren't sure that the timing was correct. I won't say that it was incorrect, but... I won't say that it was incorrect, but, you know, over the last couple of years, Whitman and Hanson had agreed to fund an audit of the district, and that outcome of that audit was publicly available information from DESI, and a little disappointing, but the towns collectively shared a concern about the, the district's finances. This year started with the superintendent recommending bringing in TMS to do an operational audit of that office, and, you know, in fiscal '25, the district spent more money than was appropriated, so there is, I'm encouraged by the steps that are being taken, but those were kind of my reasons for concern before that, so.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Dawn?
Thank you, Dawn Biaus, 20 Russell Road. I wanted to speak about the middle school pathway you just talked about, and I noticed a couple weeks ago, actually, on social media, the promotion of the open house here at the high school, and the Norfolk and Bristol Agricultural, as well as the Vote Tech. I think our messaging can be a little stronger with our high school. I'm a proud parent of two graduates here at the high school, and the messaging on social media for the open house at the high school simply had the date, didn't say the time, didn't say who was welcome, so there could be room for improvement there. And thank you for mentioning, Mr. Marks, about bringing students up here during the day, and the building's lively, right, and when there are clubs going on, and so forth, because we have a lot to offer, and I'm really excited about this high school, you know I am, I'm proud of this district, so I really want us to promote what we have, and I don't think we've done enough to promote that. George mentioned, we don't bring students up during the day because really it's a cost issue. It shouldn't be, find a way, find the money, it's there, right?